Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Just in time. I got you started.
See, it says 6:30. I'm right on time. That one does. That one does. That clock doesn't count. Those two can't. Oh, well, thank you all for getting us started here. And it looks like we get some new faces and stuff. Welcome, everybody, to the...
It's the real people.
And although Robert's not here, congratulations to Robert for his appointment to the Community Development Director position. Obviously, big news for us. Big news?
Great news.
Yes, I agree with that. Okay, usual reminders. Make sure everybody speaks clearly into the microphone, that they're turned on. Make sure that anybody speaking introduces themselves for the record so that we can capture that in the minutes. Our next Planning Board meeting after tonight is currently scheduled for October 17, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in this room. Let's see. We got alternates that need to vote tonight?
Yeah, we need one.
One alternate? So we have two alternates, Nelson or...
And Mark.
And Mark.
Put Mark on the spot.
First meeting? Do y'all put him on the spot?
Sure.
All right, why not? You okay with... Let's do that. All right.
You're gonna be here, you might as well be here.
There you go, Mark. You're a voting member tonight. Let's see. There is no consent agenda for tonight. And that brings us to item three on our agenda, which is Darty Zebolus LLC as the applicant and owner. Continued... I'm sorry. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval for a site plan to construct a two-story, 15,000-square-foot office and warehouse building with associated site improvements. The parcel is located at 101 Herrick Street in the C2 General Commercial, I-1 Industrial, and Aquar Conservation Districts, Tax Map 3D2, Lot 20, its case planning board 2023-20. It is continued from our July 18th and September 5th, 2023 Planning Board meetings. Colleen, is there anything that we need to know about the status of this one?
About Darty? I'm sorry.
Yes.
They have requested a continuation in...
Mike?
Oh, sorry. They have requested a continuation until November 7th Planning Board Agenda.
Okay, what's the will of the board?
Also move?
Second.
Motion and a second to continue this item to the November 7, 2023 Planning Board meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? We must have seven voters here tonight if we've got our alternates in. 7-0-0. Okay, item four on our agenda is Enterprise Holdings, Inc. as the applicant and Helios Investment LLC as the owner. Continued review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a... for a site plan to expand the parking and vehicle storage area for an existing car rental facility. The parcel is located at 302 Continental Boulevard in the R4 Residential and Aquar Conservation Districts, Tax Map 2B, Lot 32, case planning board 2023-25. It is also continued from our September 19, 2023 Planning Board meeting. Colleen, is there anything that we need to know before you're from this applicant?
Um, one or two things, actually. Just for your sake, I think we have six voting members. Are we supposed to have seven?
We should have seven.
One, two, three, four.
Yeah, you're both alternates, but if we need to have two alternates in, we've got them here, so...
Yeah.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We should have two alternates voting. So Nelson, you want to vote on that one, too? Or Maureen, or... Yeah, so that continuance count Nelson as a voting member, too.
Okay, perfect.
And Nelson, you want to be a voting member on this one, too, or do you care whether it's Maureen?
Well, I'm ready. I'm prepared to...
There you go. Let's go with Nelson tonight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right.
And this one, sorry, just give me one second. So this applicant, this is enterprise property located at the... kind of at the corner of Milford Road and Continental Boulevard. Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm so sorry. They are looking to expand the parking lot to add additional vehicle storage for enterprise. They're doing some onsite drainage, and that's pretty much it.
Okay. Thank you for the introduction. Please introduce yourself and tell us what's about the project.
Okay, good evening. My name is Katie Weiss. I'm with Bedford Design Consultants. Here with me tonight is Becky Marstinkovich. She's with Enterprise. So I want to talk a little bit about the original approval. So if you look over here, the purple is the new stuff. So if you look at the gray area and the white box at the top, that's what's there right now. If you look at the red line, the area on the top of that is used by Auto Fair next door. They have a fenced-in area where they are housing cars to be sold. They also have an area to the left of the fenced-in area where they have employee parking, also additional vehicle storage. Underneath the red line is the area used by Enterprise. So the gray part is where they park now, and then they have a 2,000-square-foot building. So we are proposing the purple area. On the right side, we have 45 parking spots. There are 24 in the middle of the parking area. We have 15 at the bottom, and then six along the side. I can point those out.
Katie, there's a microphone you can take with you if you want to talk while you're standing up. Grab that one.
Sure. Is there...
So there really isn't a great position to do that, but we'll have you a chance where you can stand up and take a look at the plan in a second.
We'll get it. We'll get it.
They may be able to put it on the screen for us.
Yeah, just put it on the screen. Can you put it on the screen, Grace? You don't have it, okay?
No. No. Okay. Thank you.
The song? Okay. Sure, I can hand them a copy. Here you go. So the purple area is... When I talk about the purple area, that's these six spaces in this area there. Yep. It's purple up here. There are 24 spaces here, I mean, here, 12 and 12, 15 spaces here and six along here. They're also proposing adding a drive-through. Right now, there is a door along the back, and they have to back out. So they're asking to drive-through. On the site right now, there are two wetlands. This is a wetland that was there in 2015. This is a brand-new one. It's in the sediment for bay that they put in as part of this project. So it's a man-made wetland. It does not have a setback to it. This one does. Yep, we're on the third page now. Page three. So this is a blow-up of the area. You can see the parking here in the gray. It's all new. We're going to be rearranging the spaces here. Right now, the handicap accessible spaces are right in front of where that door is going. So we're moving those around this side of the building and adding in an accessible ramp to go this way. There is no room here to put one in. It just, it wouldn't fit in this area, so we moved it to the side. As part of the planting plan, we are proposing four trees. One is existing. We're moving it over here. And then three new ones. Over here are existing shrubs that we're relocating over here. They're evergreens. We're proposing three new evergreens here, as well as a 90-foot wood stockade fence. That's to buffer from the neighbor. As we understand that we are taking trees down in this area. We also show two lights on the plan. We have one on the building and one in the center. This will be changing slightly. We're probably going to have two lights along, maybe one here and here. We're not quite sure yet. But that is changing because it doesn't meet the requirements at the moment. Then, let me go to our next page. Talk about drainage. So right now, this sediment for bay, which is a wetland at the moment, comes over to here and outlets into this purple, blue area. And what we're doing is we're paving this. So we're going to make this a drain manhole and pipe the water over here and reconfigure the for bay. It'll have the same amount of storage. And then we're going to, over here, we have two catch basins in the parking lot. They are deep sump catch basins, so they will catch any sediment. And then the water will come to this infiltration basin here. Then will be an outlet structure, which will outlet here to riprap and then off the site down to the DOT catch basin area. That's where the water goes now, so it's going in the same, the same place that it is. If you want to switch to the last page, that is architectural plans. Sorry. So I have two pictures here. I can pass them out if anyone wants me to. So this is the front of the building. Right here is where they are proposing putting in the garage door. You can see down here in this bottom picture. That is the flat surface is there now. There's no windows or anything. And then over here is a different enterprise. This is what the door will look like. So let me just pass out those two pictures for you so you can get a better look. The one on top is the existing site. Let me see. I believe that's it for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. I have a couple of questions, and I'm sure the board may have some others as well. With respect to the trees, the four trees that you're... have on your plan, one of them relocated and three new ones. It's usually, I don't know that we necessarily have a particular note on the plan just to assure that the trees take and survive, but I'm particularly interested in relocating a tree and making sure there's some provision to say the tree's got to be there a year or two down the road, and if not, it's got to be replaced and, you know, be, remain there. I don't necessarily want to have our staff chasing around counting your trees, but, so I'm not sure exactly how to provide for something like that, but if you're promising to relocate a tree, I want to make sure that it's there and it survives.
What kind of trees?
A glidet... Sorry, that's the wrong name. Shade Master Honey Locust. I was going to say the other name. He wouldn't know.
Second question I have, the 90-foot fence that you described next to the neighbors, how tall is the fence?
It's a six-foot fence.
Six-foot fence, okay. And on the pictures that you supplied, the one with the roof, this one is our buil... is the building?
Yes, the blank, the blank one is the, is our building, and then that garage door is the one that they're proposing.
So I know that you showed this to us so that we could look at the garage door, but I wanted to comment on a couple of other things in the pictures. I want to make sure that we're certainly, we expect and want to keep the peaked roof and not flat roof.
Right, nothing else is changing. They're just going to poke a hole in the wall and put in a garage.
Is the sign that we can see in both of these pictures the same as what will be, what was shown on your elevations in the last page?
It might not be. I believe that they got a sign permit when they did this originally in 2015. We had shown it here, and I think that they got a sign permit separately afterwards. So we're just using, these are the original approved before the sign permit, so this may be slightly different.
Sign is not lighted.
Or it's...
Whatever is existing is there. We're not changing it.
Might be internally lit, but one of the reasons why I bring that up is, I'm sorry for hanging on to them. In the original proposal, Enterprise had much more lighting and signage proposed and a lot, picking up on the green theme from Enterprise. And it was a little too, too bright for, I think, the approach that we take to that neighborhood. And so we asked to have this aesthetic, and I want to make sure that we're staying there. We're not going back to sort of big, green, neon things or...
Not changing any sign. All they're doing is adding in a door. That's it.
So the sign that's there now is all that's going to be?
Correct.
You got it. Okay. Those are my three questions. Let me start with Counselor Healy.
So, hi there.
Hi.
So I'm trying to get my orientation on where the building is currently and what I'm looking at in those pictures. So when you drive in the driveway and you park now in the handicap spot, where are you on the map?
Right here in this purple area. You're looking straight in.
Okay, and is that where the desk is to do business?
No, the desk is over here. So you come down the sidewalk and in the front door.
And so you're moving now to the far side of the building?
Yes.
Now, there are two kinds of handicap people. Those that are in vehicles or carts or using a walker, those that have canes, those that don't, and have trouble with ambulation. So you're moving the handicap spot further away from where the business desk is.
Yeah.
Unacceptable.
I can certainly try to make it work. The issue is that we have the entrance there, so it's in the sidewalk and then getting back into the building. I'm not sure I can make that ADA. That's, that's the issue.
You got to make it ADA.
Yes, that's why the building is here. So that was by fix for none. It wouldn't work.
But it works where it is today, or at least it is where it is.
It works where it is today, but that's where the...
So you need to do something that's comparable because you cannot make your handicapped customers walk further than they do today.
Okay.
So, thank you.
I will work on that. Yep.
Even if it's a door entrance on the end rather than the front?
Right.
That could work.
I think that goes through the garage area. I don't...
Well, consider it.
Okay, we'll look at it.
Yeah, consider a solution to that, even if you move some of the other spaces from the front to the side or something. I think that's important. It's a good point. Did any other questions, Counselor? Mr. Disco?
Where is the drainage analysis?
Mike?
Turn your microphone on, sir.
Where is the drainage analysis? I didn't get any with my package. Is that...
As I restated before, the drainage analysis is not provided to you guys. It is separate and provided to, for peer review comments. We take, I believe we concern, we revise that and look at that stuff. We do not provide drainage analysis to you guys, from what I understand.
Well, occasionally you have, and then you stop doing it for a while, and I...
Nelson wants it. Nelson wants it.
Yeah, I want it. And I want it for this, and I want it for the previous one that we passed over, too.
Yeah, certainly, you ought to be able to have it if you want to see it. And even if it's sort of something we usually defer to the engineers on, any member of the board can see any of the materials that's submitted, of course.
Well, especially this one has wetlands.
Yep. So, Colleen, is there a way that we can get that email to Nelson so he can have a look at it? Okay, let's do that.
Okay. The, the other thing was the, the trees that are planted don't, they're locust trees, as you say. They don't provide much screening. They're interesting, but they're...
They have smaller leaves.
Trees with stems and branches up high, that sort of thing.
We can certainly change it to something else if you'd like, something a little denser.
Some of the others will have some common as well. The, I just pointed out a couple of things in the staff memo, Colleen. The, it talks about the Merrimack wastewater versus Nashua. This is in the Nashua system.
Yes, that is correct. So the owners, I believe, pay their services to Merrimack. So they pay for the meter, but all that waste goes to Nashua, for what I was explaining by Mike Gorman, the wastewater director over at, not director, but...
I'm referring to your memo.
Yep.
Yeah, where it says that it should be, to say it's Merrimack wastewater.
Yep, so that was a correction I requested. Is that the plan stated Nashua, but it's actually Merrimack that takes all of it, but
It goes to...
The load goes off to Nashua.
Yes.
All right, so the plan needs a correction.
Yes.
Okay. And the other thing is mine, and it talks about 25 versus 26 spaces. And the, let me see here. The town, the Public Works Department had some concerns with the drainage. That's one of the reasons I wanted to look at it here.
Yep.
I don't know that they've been satisfied, but...
Not yet. We haven't received any revised plans or drainage analysis on our end, so their concerns, I bet you are going to be addressed, but have not yet.
So they have not...
Not yet, no.
They have not signed up on this. Okay.
No.
That was a concern. Because of additional water loadings that are happening around here and there, we want to take a good, hard look at that and be sure we're, we're covering. That's all I have.
Excellent, Nelson. The comments? No.
What are the, I'm looking at your, your dark little bubbles here. Buffer shrubs, what are those?
They're the relocated buffer shrubs. So when we did this in 2015, you had a different system of buffers. You had types of buffers, type one, type two, type three. So these were buffer shrubs here that were required as part of the buffer when we had the tree line out here.
I'm talking about those one, two, three, no, right there. Yep, and there and there.
Yes, so these are the relocated buffer shrubs. So here's buffer shrubs. Shrubs relocated. Oh, I'm not sure what they are.
How high are they?
I don't know. They were six feet at the time of planting when they went in. I'm not sure what they were.
Okay, but they're at least six feet?
Yes.
Thank you for that question. Further questions, then?
No, I'm all set.
Down here, any others? Okay, so I may have another question or two, but I think our first duty is to decide whether the application's complete and has enough information for the board to invoke jurisdiction. What is the will of the board?
I will so move.
Is there a second for Lynn's motion to find the application complete? Nobody else will. I'll second it just so we can get some discussion going here. It's kind of a strange thing to be stalled on, but all in favor of finding the application complete, say aye.
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 Any opposed? One opposed?
I'm not complete, yeah.
Okay, any abstaining? Okay, so 6-1-0 to find the application complete. Nelson, I don't mean to put you on the spot if you don't want to answer, but if you're willing to share the thought process there, it may inform others.
He wants the drainage.
My thought, it's the drainage issue that I brought up, Bob. I think we should have a look at it and before we...
Oh, I think we will, before we vote, but they've submitted it. We just, it isn't here for us to look at.
Are we voting on this tonight, or...
It sounds like you need to look at the drainage, right? I was going to suggest that we ultimately create a time span for you to do, I would think, right?
I'll be happy with that.
I think we were also asking them to take a look at the ADA parking space and create a solution, which would require some revisions for us to look at. So I wasn't, I mean, the board can go wherever it wants to go, but I wasn't thinking that we were likely to vote.
Okay, I wasn't caught up with you.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. On the comment that Nelson had made about the tree, the locust tree screenings, although I agree that hardwood trees tend to have the branches up high and the stems down low, these aren't necessarily trees that I thought as being a part of the screening process with the trees and the shrubs and all of that. I thought that they're there for aesthetic purposes and...
I agree.
Potentially quite nice trees. So I wouldn't necessarily look to change those to being, you know, arbor vady or something that screens, given that there's other things in there to screen with. With that in mind, general discussion by the board about anything in the proposal. Let's find out if the public has any comments or information for the board. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Come on up to the microphone, sir, and introduce yourself. Katie, if you guys want to come up, Katie, you want to give them the table? Come on up here to the table if you want.
Come sit at the table. That way you each have a mic.
Come on up and address the question to us, and then we'll convey it to her. Have a seat and introduce yourself for the record. Make sure your microphone's turned on, and then let us know whatever's on your mind.
Bright green?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The folks at home can't hear you without one.
Hello, so I'm not used to this.
What's your name?
Ken Morse.
Hi, Ken.
I live
Next door.
Right next to the line. Okay, that's my house.
Understood.
On Natta Cook Road, 229.
229 Natta Cook Road, got it.
Yeah. First question I got here, why are you cutting all the trees down? They're planting new trees. I mean, there's trees, there's I don't know how many feet they go, but there's trees that are already there that have grown, you know, way up into the air, you know, it's old trees. Why are they cutting them down and putting in shrubs? Buffer shrubs? Is that what it is? Relocated buffer?
Yes.
And then they're putting in proposed tree rubs? Is that what it is? See it? To replace the trees that they're cutting down.
I'll have them address that.
Reason why I'm asking this, I'm stupid, I know. Right now, with the parking lot that's out there now, where they put the cars from Auto Fair, when the leaves fall off the trees, those lights shine up my kitchen and part of my house, all right? They, they put a, well, they did put a little fence down here, running between something else. If they tear all those things down, the parking lot they're putting in, those lights are going to shine even more in my house, right? A six-foot fence ain't going to do it. You know what I'm saying? They've got, the lights that are out there now, 30 feet tall. They, they get into both our houses, and he lives next to me.
Let me pause for one second. Colleen, if Auto Fair's lights aren't full cutoff, can you guys go out there and take a look at it and, and correct that situation if it is, because they should be?
Yeah, I can definitely check that with Robert.
And how close is that parking lot coming to my property? I don't see it in here.
They've got one with the dimensions for at least a 20-foot setback, and it's outside of that, but let's see.
Does it have to be so close, or can they go further away from me? I mean, at night, too, sometimes you hear beep, 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 like someone's in a car out there that's doing something with it. Could he kind of cut the noise down there and make it further away?
So let's...
It looks like they're at least 30 feet.
Well, we'll ask them. We'll get them to verify the distance. We'll get them to answer the question about the trees. Any other questions that you want them to answer?
You want some?
I have, I have a couple of questions.
Hang on a second. Introduce yourself. Make sure your microphone's turned on.
My name's Francis Whaley. I am a direct abutter at 227 Natta Cook Road.
Thank you, sir.
The light issues have been an issue, you know, in the upper parking lot for a long time. They light up your whole backyard, especially in the winter. We've been living with that. There's supposed to be low-intensity lighting. I don't know why they need to be on all night long anyway, but I think we discussed this at the board at that time, and they decided they had to be on all the time.
So I can provide a...
Neither here nor there.
I can provide a little feedback on that for you. Two things. Auto Fair isn't the same as the applicant that's before us tonight. This applicant said they're not going to run their lights bright at night. But also, I just asked the department to go look at what's going on at Auto Fair and make sure they're complying with the requirements, because if they're not, we'll get that fixed for you, too.
I read their low-intensity lighting and their hours of operation. And I'm glad that they put that in there, and it's respectable, and I pretty much understand that this is going to happen no matter what. But do they have to be so close to us? Kenny's mostly impacted by this. I'm not as impacted. Some of the questions I have, one of them was, by cutting down these existing trees, you really lose, it really opens up much more visibility to see the buildings in the parking lots that are there. And just by cutting all those down, I understand that he would be better off if they didn't cut them all down. The other question, the other, the other question I, I have, not really fully understanding how this lot is divided and why the other parking lot belongs to another business. I'm just curious as to how much more space are these people going to need? Are they going to be impacting more towards the rear of the property eventually? Is this any type of an intention of this business to continue to need more and more parking? Reason being, originally, the car dealership parking lot was going to be 20 feet off of my property line. For some reason, it was going to cover my whole backyard. They changed it, and they shortened their parking... They changed it and they shortened their parking lot and that worked out great for me, because then I didn't have to have them right off of my stone wall and devaluing my property. But I guess I'm concerned that where does this end?
Sure. So I don't have a great answer for you, or at least not one that you'll like. They'll, they're not proposing anything more today than what you see, but they've got the right at any point to propose building everywhere within setbacks, so that's the right any developer of a property, any owner of a property has, you as well, to build anywhere within your setbacks.
So, understanding that most of what you guys are discussing here is civil engineering stuff, which I'm well acquainted with, because that's what I do for a living. I've already pretty much accepted the fact that we know that this is going to go in, so I would just basically appeal to the board and the civil engineer and the ownership to consider trying not to cut any more trees there than necessary, because that really is what impacts us the most. I know you're not gonna move the parking lot. I know there's no space there to move it. I can see that myself. I wish, I wish that could be the case for Kenny, because this man has lived here for seventy-five years, his whole life, and remembers when it was a farm. And city has just moved in on him and moved in on him and I feel bad for him.
Don't feel bad.
You know, they put a commercial building across the street from my house since I moved there when it was a dead-end street and it's like city's just moving in on us. So I would just basically appeal to the board and to the civil engineer and the owner of Enterprise to try to do the best they can to not cut any more trees than necessary, because it's a big impact likewise, to keep the business hours down to respectable times so that they're not loading and unloading vehicles in the middle of the night, in the middle of Continental Boulevard for that matter, at all hours of the night and driving cars in and out, which I know Enterprise doesn't do, but...
Yeah, I think Auto Fair is probably the car loader and unloader more often than Enterprise is, if it ever does.
Yeah.
Another question to that, I'm not gonna interrupt you here, but where they come on the Continental Boulevard, you guys gonna put lights out there or something? Because I've seen almost ten dozen accidents for people that are coming down from Auto Fair or the rental place, going on the Continental Boulevard, they don't look either way and they just fly out.
People are crazy drivers for sure, but no, that didn't, that particular intersection would never come close to warranting a traffic light based on what's going there.
It's, sometimes it's dangerous spot. People don't look or they just don't care or the... Well, I know they don't stop at red lights. They don't stop at stop signs. I mean, I know that, but...
No, I appreciate it.
Kind of a concern as far as safety is concerned.
Well, you make a great point. Unfortunately, when people aren't gonna look or aren't gonna be careful, they can make literally anything dangerous on that basis, right?
Yeah, but they just seem to be, I mean, there's... You know, I just, I don't know, stupid or what? I mean, I don't know the effective word for it. I don't know. But another thing here...
More than not.
Who, who changed residential line to commercial line here? When was that changed?
I'm not, I couldn't give you an exact date, but I can tell you there's been no zoning changes out there in the ten or eleven years I've been on the board and probably for a lot longer than that.
So it's still residential, right?
Yeah.
It is in the, it's in the residential and industrial zones. Is that right?
What does that make my house? Residential and industrial too?
They're in the general, commercial and the residential district four, so you're in the R4 district. There and they overlap.
They have a commercial use and a residential.
They're also partially in the C2 general commercial district. That's why that situation exists. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your comments. If you have any more.
Not to make work for anybody, but I presume that the variances were all put in place for the corner of the building in the parking lot.
We'll check with staff to make sure that's the case for sure.
I mean, I don't wanna, I'm not trying to throw a bone in your job. It makes things worse for you, but it just, it's obvious it's over the lines. I just thought I'd ask. Well, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your comments. We'll get some answers from...
Considering whatever you can do would be greatly appreciated.
I just can't see cutting down trees and planting more trees.
Thank you. Let's hear what the applicant has to say about that. You know, when I saw that they're relocating some trees, that tells me usually that it's a very conservative approach to dealing with trees and they're not cutting things down willy-nilly, but let's hear from them what they actually say is there and all of that, so we'll give them a chance. Thank you, sir.
We move it?
Yeah, you are. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing to comments from the public or abutters. Katie, could you confirm the distance between the closest edge of pavement to the property line?
Looks like it's about twenty-six feet.
About twenty-six feet is as close as it is, okay. And can you tell us whatever there is to know about the choices that have been made about trees and what to do and what to keep otherwise?
I'm gonna go to the grading plan. So...
Which plan, which sheet are you looking at?
This is sheet four. So you can see the parking lot up here. Then we have drainage coming down into this infiltration area. I can look at trying to keep a clump of trees in here, adding some back in here. That should help a little bit since his house is right here, so a little bit. But I believe that our lights are not in that. If I could do that, it's not really gonna help with the lights that we're proposing.
Katie, what about from the retention pond to the property line?
Right? From here to here?
Nope, to the right.
From here to here?
Yes.
We have a little bit of grading and we show the line up to the grading there.
Are you taking down trees in that area?
Yes, we're taking down about thirty feet of trees.
Is there any reason you need to?
Yes, because we have to put the pond in and the pond has to have a certain depth and then a certain width at the top and then from there a three-to-one slope, so there's certain slopes that we have to meet.
But between the pond and the property line, can more trees be left?
Not really, no, because there's grading that goes through here, so...
There's grading, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that's the reason why the trees that have been or are set to be taken down are on the list?
Yes, but I will look at trying to keep a clump of trees in here. It'll depend, so the tree line right now is here. So there's no trees at this side, so I can look in this area and see what we can keep. Go out to the site and see if there's anything that's worth keeping. Sometimes the trees, if they're in a forest, you don't wanna keep them because they're so tall. So I'm not sure how tall they are here, because then they could become hazard for falling if you take the trees around them down.
So some of the trees that you're taking down are being taken down because of the retention pond?
Yes, the retention pond here and then obviously the parking lot you're taking.
I'm more concerned with the retention pond, because that's where the buffers, that's where they're looking for the buffer.
Yes.
And if it's the retention pond, you gotta take them down. And if you're replacing some in other areas, that's good.
Okay.
If I could talk about the zoning real quick, we did get a variance. On July 26, 2004, the Merrimack Zoning Board of Adjustment granted a variance to allow general commercial use in the residential zone. That is note fourteen on the set.
On which page of the?
The first set, the first page, note fourteen.
Other comments or questions by members of the board? Go ahead with your question, please.
With respect to the, your detention basin, could you reorient that ninety degrees so that it's facing a different direction? You still have the same volume and you could retain the trees?
No, because the slope is going in this direction from here, from here to here on the existing topography. So when you do a test pit, you need to know where your water table is, so if you switch it, then you're stuck with a water table that's up higher and then suddenly your detention pond is up higher and you're grading more and you could have a pond that might be considered a dam or other issues can occur when you do that.
Could you bring it closer to the road and reshape it a little bit so that you're out of that grading concern?
We're pretty close to the road right now. I mean, we could bring it in a little bit. It would probably move maybe fifteen feet possibly. I don't think that's gonna help with anything here, because we're still restricted by the water table, yeah.
And that's also not between the neighbor and any lights or shiny things? Talk about your lights and hours and the things that were discussed, and I think there was actually some follow-up information about lighting.
Yes, so the waiver that we're requesting is from the old site plan, which has to do with this parking lot, so we can talk about that after. So the lighting for what we're doing now, I'm proposing one on the building right now here. And right now I'm showing one in the middle, but that does not meet your requirements along here and the edges. We need at least point-three foot candles for safety and we're not there, so we're gonna need to amend that and probably put either a light here and here or maybe one on each side here, so that's gonna have to be looked at.
Okay, so you've got a waiver that you've requested, isn't that what it's for?
No, the waiver is actually for, that waiver is a carryover from the first site plan approval. Apparently needs to be reapproved. And it's for the lighting up here in...
Auto Fair's lighting.
Yeah.
And we don't know if they're in compliance anyway, so...
Yeah, I wanna know that if they're in compliance or not before we consider their waiver, but I'm not sure that we can't move your application ahead with that being sorted out. Let's talk to the staff about that and see. I don't want to hold you up for that piece, but I do wanna get Auto Fair in compliance if they're not. Okay. You do have a couple of waivers that you've asked for. Let's talk, talk us through the waivers and let's let the board deal with them.
Sure.
Any order that you see fit?
Yes, hold on a second, I gotta pull them out. They're not right there. The first waiver we are requesting is for trees greater than fifteen inches in diameter. We are proposing the removal of small sections of trees on the sites and the large trees within this area would still need to be removed, even if they are fifteen inches, because we need this area to do our project. So whether they're fifteen inches or not, they'd still need to come down, so that's why we're asking for a waiver. And then the second waiver we're asking for is from the traffic analysis. We're not proposing to change the building size and parking analysis, I mean, not parking analysis, traffic analysis are all based on square footage of building. So that's not changing, so the traffic analysis is technically the same.
Okay.
And then the third one is the waiver for the lighting, which is for section 3.13, I believe, and that is for the parking lot lighting for Auto Fair on the top half of the site, because it was not for public use up there, it's storage.
So we'll have to address Auto Fair. We'll kind of talk that over with staff and sort that out. For your own site with one light rather than adding more lights to get your candle powers up, if you guys are satisfied with that, I would recommend you ask for a waiver for it, because I'd rather see less light.
Okay, then we would love to ask for a waiver for that, yes.
Absolutely.
I'd encourage you to ask for that, as long as you think the security's there. Couple of other things. On the, on the traffic impact analysis, in order to support a waiver on that or get the staff's analysis of a waiver recommendation, essentially you're doing the same work as the basic traffic analysis. And so it ends up being a waiver we very rarely grant, because if you do the basic information, we need to grant the waiver, you don't need the waiver. Or at least that's the way it's worked out most often in the past. Colleen, am I getting that right with respect to these guys or are they different because of the approval?
I believe you're right, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one.
Okay. In essence, just understanding, there's some element in our regulation for a minimal traffic analysis, which is almost a desktop event that you can do yourself without a traffic engineer and that essentially is the analysis that you're asking for a waiver from?
Yeah, an hour of my time, just, it's not, it's not gonna show anything that's different than now, so that's why we're asking for...
Traffic is a high sensitivity issue though with folks that are watching what the planning board does.
I guess I'm confused, because you're adding more parking spaces to have more cars available, so you have more customers, which equals more traffic, regardless of the size of the building.
I can tell you that actually a lot of these spaces will be used by people who are actually renting cars. So they'll be driving to the site, leaving their car and then grabbing a car from Enterprise and leaving with it, so...
So that's two trips that can't happen today, because there's no cars?
Right.
Or no spaces for cars? So it is a little bit more traffic, even though if it doesn't...
It is, but it's not gonna, it's not gonna show that there's more traffic, again, because it's based on the square footage of the building.
Oh, that's true. The analysis isn't gonna count.
It's not gonna show anything about parking spaces.
Yeah, it's a weird analysis that we've required for these. We oughta have a different way of looking at it, but either way, if you'll do that basic analysis for us, that will clear that one up. On the trees greater than fifteen inches, I, I get the point that you're making with the analysis and it is a persuasive point. Understanding the neighbors' concerns, it would be helpful for me to even have a count of fifteen-inch trees that are gonna be coming down or something to know what we're sacrificing and that may inform what we want for a screening or buffering replacement for it.
Okay.
Is that possible to do?
Yes.
Is that, I, as board members, I don't speak for everybody here. If you disagree, you can do that.
I, I agree, because we need to know whatever is there now is supplying the buffer and helping with the light control. So we need to know what those are and how many of them you're actually taking down, because as we talked about before, the honey locusts and the locust trees, they're very tall with most of the growth at the top of the tree. I have a bunch in my backyard, so I can speak from experience. You know, we may wanna look at, or you may wanna look at, putting something in that's a little more dense, something like a blue spruce or something. We don't want the pines in there necessarily, because those are a problem. But the blue spruce doesn't have that type of problem or some of the other evergreens. So you need to know what you got and what the density is to block that light.
Where they are.
Yeah, I think where they are is important too, because if they're trees that aren't really functioning as a buffer, because they're not between two things that need buffering, then whatever, they don't matter in terms of the plan to remove them, but if they're functioning in any way as a buffer, we wanna make sure that what you're building to replace them, fence and shrubbery and otherwise, does the best job we can for the neighbors to...
So just to clarify, looking for a count of fifteen-inch trees instead of locating them?
That's what I asked for, yeah, that's...
I want location.
I want both.
If you want location, then we don't grant the waiver, then just vote no on the waiver and we don't do that, and that, which is a choice. It's up to the board to do that if you wanna see those trees. Sir, I know you're raising your hand to add more comments. The public comment period closed, though. Okay, we can get the staff to clear up your question for you. Our staff will clear up that question for you when we get an opportunity to do so. Don't, Jim. Answer his question.
Okay.
Thanks. Brief recess.
Do we have a lighting plan for this overall site?
There's several plans, I think, overlaying each other, if I remember right. She's been pointing to one. The lighting plan, it's the one that's up there that got displayed. Yeah, sheet three of eight. You ready, Katie? Thank you for that, by the way. I would imagine that it's in your design plan for your lighting to be full cutoff and things. I see a lighting note though, and these look like LED lights that are not necessarily full cutoff.
There should be a note saying they should be fully dark sky compliant. I believe that there's another word for it now besides dark sky.
Yeah, always behind the terminology.
They have my plan.
I'm looking for sort of horizontal shielding between the light source and the neighbors. And these lights don't appear to have any horizontal shielding.
IDA dark sky, I mean here, these LED ones?
Yeah, the ones on sheet three of eight, yeah.
The pictures is what you're saying?
Yep.
Okay, well, that is in the requirement that we have to put that in. I thought they were, but as I said, we're going to have a lighting person look at it again. They're supposed to be. If they're not, then they will be.
Okay.
We want to see the cutoffs, you know?
Yeah, I want the horizontal shielding around the light so that it isn't going into the neighbor's yard directly. Obviously, if there's reflected light or ambient light or something like that. But that's the same thing that we're going to ask of auto fare when our staff goes out there. Okay. Other comments or questions by the board?
I did have a question. So as far as the comments here from, from the abutters, they were talking about the, the lighting that was coming down from the lot that's used from auto fare. As far as like the elevation is from that lot into the newly proposed lot, what is that? Just so I have a relation then for like the six foot fencing, because they were making the comment, I guess that that wasn't sufficient. And I was just kind of curious as to.
So I don't have the information for here. It looks like his house is at about elevation two twelve on the first floor, something like that. And up here, we're at two twenty, so it's higher than two twenty up here. So you've got fifteen feet or so.
Thank you.
Did you say you'd have a lighting consultants?
We do, yes. This is, this was not done by a lighting consultant. It was a kind of a placeholder and we knew we would need to be redoing it, which I discussed earlier that we'll be changing the lights.
Prepare a photometric?
Yes, photometric, yeah.
Okay. And I think there's a better solution with respect to the trees. And agree with everyone's comment that it feels like we're removing an unnecessary amount for what you're trying to accomplish. So I would encourage you to take another look at that one and see if that can be improved.
The biggest issue is just that this is the area where we have to put the pond because of the test pits and what the information that we got from the test pit, so we couldn't put the pond here. Otherwise, it would have been up here and we would have kept more, but we just weren't able to. So we'll look in this area here and see what we can keep and obviously get the, either the counts of trees or the locations, whichever you vote for.
And, but as we review it, I also want to understand, have the board members sort of alerted to the idea of trees in the area of that pond don't serve to, don't stand between any two objects that need buffering from each other. And so if you cut them all down, it isn't going to increase or decrease the light for the neighbor because there's no light source on the, in that direction. The light source is to the west at auto fare. Some of it obviously matters for the building and highway and that sort of thing. But for the most part, those particular trees down south of the pond aren't buffer trees as they sit there today. They're trees, but not buffering anything. So as we learn to get more information, as we gather more information, when Katie brings us back the location of the trees, I just wanted that to be something that was part of the consideration discussion.
So, so it sounds like we're going to continue this?
It is, but I want to make sure that we've had all whatever discussion that we need to have. So Katie's got whatever information she needs to have to provide for us for the next meeting. I think we talked about understanding more about the ADA parking space and making sure that that was closer. I think Nelson, your comment was related to
Drainage?
Getting the drainage plan, which is just our staff getting that to him for him to understand and review. We want to understand the location of the trees. We could address the other waiver request, not the bed, not the auto fare one, but the, oh, it was a traffic one, which we can resolve with a traffic study. So we don't, we don't necessarily need to do any work on waivers today. What else do we need to, oh, the lighting and understanding of better plan for the lighting notes and perhaps even having a waiver request to not light your parking lot any more than what you've already got on the plan, if possible. I don't want you guys to take security risks or to do things that are dumb or unnecessary just because we said so. If you tell us there's a reason to put more lighting, then so be it. But if you can live with a little bit less lighting and it helps the neighbors, I'm always encouraging people to work together that way. Making all the right, all the right head, no, it's over there. Anything else that we discussed tonight that we want to make sure that we're addressing between now and whenever we would?
I think you got it all.
Katie, what's your sense of the time that you would need to?
Give me a second to think about the field crew and how, how early they can get out. I don't know if October seventeenth is enough time. Is it okay if we continue past October seventeenth? Okay, we could do a two meetings from now.
I think November seven is the first in November, is that right?
Yes, November seventh is, but to get information into us would be October seventeenth, which is not, I mean, it's far enough, but if you can get that, all that information in by October seventeenth, that's great.
I think we could do that. I just didn't think it would be enough time for someone to then look at it and have the meeting.
Yeah, so November seventh would be the next available meeting.
We don't have elections.
It is election day on the calendar, but we don't have elections.
We don't have elections.
So you also, we're going to try to retain some of the trees between the auto fare parking lot. I mean, the expanded parking lot and your pond, I think.
Yes.
To retain some of those trees that are there. If there's a possibility to have, I don't know what it takes to get a decent photograph of what trees are in that area that might be retained, but sort of understanding the values of those trees, is it low scrub that really is going to be ineffective or are they good quality, tall, thick, heavy, nice trees or whatever? Some sense of what's there would be helpful.
And if you're replacing trees, replacing them with something other than the locusts?
Okay.
Denser.
I kind of like the locusts, but maybe some other stuff in addition to it.
Aesthetically, they're fine, but as long as you've got additional, like the spruces that are for buffering purposes, not aesthetics,
Yep.
then that's what I would look for.
I, we didn't mention it before. I think you mentioned your, your fence is proposed at six feet tall.
Yeah.
I don't know whether putting an eight foot fence would solve much better for the neighbors than the six foot one. But if it's a reasonable expense, it might be something that could build some goodwill with the neighbors.
Okay, you might need a twenty foot.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do a twenty foot like a tennis court fence, but.
And we can also take a look at maybe moving it higher up the hill to see if that would block more than versus it being closer to the property line where it's lower.
That might help.
Yeah, that's true. Okay. Colleen, if we continue this to November seventh, will you guys be able to have some communication with auto fare between now and then so that we know what's going on with their lights?
Um, I believe so. It is the same property owner that owns the lot, so we would have to contact this property owner.
I don't think you have any objection to that.
Yeah, straight line right there.
So yeah, but we can definitely work that out.
Yeah, at the end of the day, this is where the approvals go, where the changes would be. Even though auto fare is involved, they're just a renter.
Right.
So it goes with this site.
Okay. That makes sense and understanding whether those light fixtures are correct or not, that makes it a little bit simpler. So it is actually your waiver, not auto fare's waiver for, for that. And although I don't know why we would have to renew a waiver that's already been granted, but I guess for toll too, it's not that big a deal.
Well, compliance is, is the first thing.
Yes, absolutely so. Okay. Katie, do you have any questions of us about what's to come or expected between now and next time?
No, I don't think so. I did have a question about the conditions. We do have a state permit. We have to get alteration of terrain approval. We'll be going for a new alteration of terrain because we're past our threshold for an amendment. I wasn't sure, I just wanted to clarify, is the AOT need to be received before the plans can be signed? Or is that a condition for like building it? I was, wasn't sure where, it didn't specifically say for the plans being signed. I just wanted to know where.
So my understanding with our subsequent conditions is that those, that's what those are, is ones that you meet before signature, is that clear? Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So you don't need it for us to vote to approve it, but you do need it for us to sign the plans?
It'll be a condition, renew it.
Absolutely so.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, with that in mind, if there's no other discussion to be had for this application and applicant, is there a motion to continue this to a future date?
It's so moved to November seventh.
No further notice to abutters. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Nelson, is that a question or just a second?
No, I was going to second.
We'll count Nelson as a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Seven zero zero. To the, to gentlemen who testified today, I just want to make sure you knew what we did. We're going to hear this again on November seventh, but you won't receive any other notice in the mail. So you got to remember that date and come back. Okay. Thank you.
After the meeting.
Yeah.
Or in the hall.
Yeah, either one of those things. Okay, back to our agenda. That completes item four. Our item five is planning and zoning administrators' report and discussion of possible action regarding other items of concern. There is an item listed here, which is heritage commission membership. And you guys have gotten a bit of different communications about that and as well as a flyer that explains what heritage commissions do. And, and perhaps since this is a town council initiative, councillor Healy may know more as well and be able to share it. I think we've also learned that councillor Healy serves on the heritage commission already. And we want to make sure that it's appropriate for her to, i- if she serves on there, whether or not we should appoint a second person from the planning board. And we don't have that answer yet.
Bob, can I just say something?
Yes, please.
We, per town manager's office today, we will need to postpone this discussion as they are doing research regarding the RSAs and discussing options with legal counsel. Once we have a clear established path, we will bring this discussion back to the planning board. Accordingly, no discussion or board action should be taken at this time.
Okay.
So I guess continue it till our next meeting.
We don't necessarily have to vote to continue it because it was just a discussion item, but I do want everybody to consider the idea of potential membership on the heritage commission, should that become available once they review the regulations. And obviously, I think it is important work and it would be great to have a member of the board to do it. I can't put my own neck out there because my own neck is already on seventy-eight other boards and don't have any more to give.
And if I may?
Yes, please.
Just, it's not really a discussion, it's just kind of an overview of the relationship now with the heritage commission. Actually, it falls under the community development office. That's why we meet down in that room downstairs. And what the relationship has been in the past is it's been sort of, instead of being really tight as far as demolition of buildings and that type of thing, we haven't always had that information come to us before demolition or restoration or remodeling of any of the historic homes here in Merrimack. And as you've may have noticed or not noticed over the last several years, we've lost a couple of more of our historic houses. It's very nice that one of them actually was saved, the Reverend Wright House, which is at that bottom of Columbus Circle there before you take the right to go to, or the left to go to Abel Abeniza. You know, they did a nice restoration on that home. And one of our members, Anita Krieger, she was kind of involved with the owner, working loosely with that. But the, that's kind of the way the heritage commission works as opposed to the historical society. The historical society is more of a voluntary organization that was formed. Heritage Commission is formed by RSA. So therein lies the difference and why we don't join at the hip very much. Although a lot of the members do cross, we do work with them. And I know some of you may know or may not know, we've been working with the family that has a family grave on the Thomas More campus. And those are the type of things that we help with as well as work with some of the participation with some of the state projects that go on. So we'll find out more and see how that works. But that doesn't preclude, I'm not even sure it precludes you if you all of a sudden wanted to join and not be an ex officia member of the planning board. We always have some.
True, there are other membership categories for that board other than as the planning board's.
Ex officia.
Is there a limit on the number of people who can serve on the board?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that's covered in the RSA and you have that in your package. There is no.
Okay. Any other discussion items? Colleen, I skipped over the idea that you might have a zoning administrators' report.
I do not, that was just one, one thing about heritage commission.
Okay, thank you for that.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody else have anything to discuss? Certainly welcome our new members. And let's tackle our minutes of September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a second to approve as printed? Nelson, Nelson seconds. Any further discussion on the draft minutes? If not, then all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? We have approved our minute, seven zero zero. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Disco, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Six zero zero, seven zero zero.